And placed in its regular order on the regular agenda, seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the consent agenda for September 21, 2022.
Moved by Aaron's Horst is our support.
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Corbin?
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron's Horst?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. In all of our public meetings, under the Public Meetings or the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we allow the opportunity for the public to address council or any of our boards committees and commissions during their meetings as well. Each person is allowed to speak once. This is one-way communication. It's your opportunity to speak to us. We don't answer questions or engage in conversation at this time. We also ask that you direct your comments to council, not to other members of the audience, and please speak into the microphone because this meeting is being broadcast and people at home want to hear what you have to say as well. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me, a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time, yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that, and we ask that you please follow that rule. Having said that, if you'd like to address council at this time, please approach the podium and state your name and the municipality in which you live. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
So my name is Doug Zialstra. I live in the city of Holland. I am the county commissioner for the city of Holland. I just want to give a brief county update. I think it's been a couple months since I've been here, but first from the ARPA committee, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Committee, we approved three major projects at our last business meeting. Project you know well, $2 million grant to the dwelling place for downtown Holland affordable housing. These funds are going to supplement MISTHA funding toward a 46-unit development. Project would include vouchers for 11 units for adults with disabilities, as well as 35 units for households earning 40 to 60% of area median income. $1.5 million grant to Semeritas Affordable Living of Spring Lake for housing. ARPA funds supplementing MISTHA funding toward a 53-unit development. Units should be priced between 30 and 70% of county median income. Project including vouchers for eight units for adults with disabilities. This would market to senior group. And then the last one is $2 million to Ottawa County's eviction prevention program in partnership with Good Sam Ministries. And unfortunately, City Manager Vabik is not here because I really want to thank him for his efforts advocating for that project. It's going to help over 1,500 families over the three years. 500 families per year will be prevented. So very excited about that locally funded eviction prevention program here in Ottawa County. Very few in this state, very few counties in the state have a program like that. Second, from public health, I am excited to report that Ottawa County Health Department now has the bivalent booster vaccine, which is the super booster, which provides protection against the original coronavirus strain, as well as the newer Omicron. Residents can reach out to the Health Department for an appointment. That's all I have. As always, please reach out to disaster@myorder.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henriksen Zeeland. Make sure you view this on the city of Holland website, council meeting September 21, 2022, and show this to your pastor and friends. We are the members of West Michigan. What happens here affects all of us. Some may not know why we are here. We are not against any people group mentioned in the 2020 Holland Diversity Equity and Inclusion Ordinance. We are here for our religious freedoms. For background information, a people group is specially defined in the 2020 Anti-Discrimination DEI Ordinance Law. No other people group in the ordinance is defined. The definition in the ordinance for sex, which once meant gender, now means a people group. Sexual orientation shall mean emotional romantic, sexual attractions, or absence thereof to people. Sexual orientation also refers to a person's sense of identity based on those attractions, related behaviors, and a membership in a community of others who share those attractions. Gender expression shall be defined as a gender-based appearance, expression, and behavior of an individual, regardless of the individual's assigned sex at birth. Gender identity shall be defined as an individual's internal sense of their own sex and defining component of sex. This group of people is identified by appearance, expression, and behavior. The most important part is that they are people. Mayor Box said in the decision that it was a necessary definition because people do not know what sexual orientation is. I read this as a point of information, not judgment. The appearance, expression, and behavior is an ideology, which is seen here as a people group and what they think. The ordinance also states that this chapter shall not prohibit or interfere with persons or religious institutions, free exercise of religion as protected in the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and the Michigan Constitution. The city attorney stated this summer that because of this last clause, our religious rights are protected. Here is a conflict of interest. Our religious rights of a person and religious institution's expression is suppressed when it comes to living it out in the marketplace. Religious beliefs do not embrace the sex orientation ideology that is advocated in this ordinance. The ordinance was suggested by the Michigan Department of Anti-Discrimination, who changed the definition of sex to be exactly what is in the Holland ordinance. The people of Holland are not given the opportunity to participate in the language or the writing of this ordinance. Therefore, the culture of pride delegates that our religious rights are to be expressed only in the church walls and not in schools, businesses, parks, and the generous ministries who help the poor and the needy. The ordinance has put undue burden on the people of faith. We are asking the city of Holland council to revisit this ordinance and have it written by the people and for the people. We will hear today from guest speakers and others. This same challenge exists throughout the country. First Liberty Ministry Relations Officer Taylor Birchfield from Plano, Texas. Turning Point USA Chris Howe, Grand Rapids, and he's not here, so we might be stuck in traffic. Concerned Women of America representative is sick tonight. So I have the proclamation that we are requesting of Mayor Box to declare April as Faith Month 2023 calendar as recognized as the National Proclamation by the United States Congress. And then Mordecai Ministries Reverend Walter Slaughter of Holland, Michigan. When the speakers are finished, then we invite the audience to speak what they hear and what they think. The council needs to hear the public. One more thing, sin will be mentioned here. We are all sinners born in sin. We have been warned in the Bible, we cannot look at another and see the speck in their eye and neglect to see the log in our own. This message of sin is for every one of us here. If you know Christ, you must get on your knees and thank Him for saving us. We are here for a greater purpose, to love one another and not to mock God. I'm going to give you the proclamation.
You can leave that with the city clerk or the assistant city manager. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Taylor Birchfield, and I live in Plano, Texas. Good evening. I just want to thank the city council for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm with First Liberty Institute. If you haven't heard of us, I'm sure you will soon by the end of the year. Who are we and what do we do? We are the largest nonprofit law firm in the country that defends and protects your First Amendment religious rights and freedoms. Our mission statement is as such, First Liberty Institute's mission is to advance religious liberty across America in schools, houses of worship, faith-based organizations, the military, and throughout the marketplace and public arena. Originally founded in 1972, First Liberty Institute has evolved with the times and the needs of the nation. In 1997, we began to focus on Texas litigation as a nonprofit law firm on issues of religious liberty with Kelly Shackelford as president and CEO. In 2014, we founded our military division, focused on protecting the religious liberty of service members and veterans, with senior counsel Mike Berry as the Director of Military Affairs. In February 2016, Liberty Institute officially became First Liberty Institute, and today, First Liberty is the largest legal organization in the nation dedicated exclusively to protecting religious liberty for all Americans. We have about 75 staff members throughout the nation, and our headquarters is located in Plano, Texas. Currently, we have 92 cases in 12 different states. Why do we do it? We believe that every American of any faith, or no faith at all, has a fundamental right to follow their conscience and live according to their beliefs. Fighting for our religious freedom is to fight for the future of all freedoms. None of these people would normally be able to afford the legal representation that we provide for free. Some examples of our current cases are the fact that we're protecting 35 Navy SEALs who have requested religious accommodation to not take the COVID-19 vaccine, and have been denied not only their religious freedom, but also deployment and duties in the military. We did not know that when you join the military, they're forcing you to give up some of your constitutional rights, and that is why we protect and fight for them every day. Our latest victories have been at the Supreme Court level, including a coach, a football coach, Joe Kennedy from Bremerton, Washington, who was fired for a 20-second silent prayer by himself at the 50-yard line after a victory. And also, we have Gerald Groff, who is a USPS worker, who was fired for refusing to work on the Sabbath after being granted religious accommodations. How do we do it? We have a 90% winning rate, and we have an amazing legal team who also networks to find attorneys and firms in local areas near where our cases are taking place to have local knowledge and offer their services pro bono. We also host events, speak at city council meetings, have prayer partners. We also have generous donors who give financially and also, more importantly, with their time. More information and details can be found on our website at firstliberty.org. And lastly, we defend various faiths, ideologies, and backgrounds because the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is available for everyone. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Reverend Walter Slaughter, and I'm from Holland, Michigan. And it's a thank you for allowing me to speak today, and it's good to be before you to speak in person. And I wanted to start with a quote from George Washington that George Washington stated this. He said, "It's impossible to govern a country without God and the Bible." The Bible is the blueprint, God's blueprint for mankind, that God has graciously given to us. And, you know, I'm here to speak not only on behalf of myself, but my family and the people here. We all know where we came from. Genesis, Chapter 3, you know, tells us where we all came from. And God tells us in His Word that Acts 4, Chapter, verse 12, that "There is no other name under heaven by which we must be saved," and that name is Jesus Christ. And John 3:16 says this, "For God so loved the world that He gave His one and only begotten Son, that whosoever believeth in Him shall not perish but have everlasting life." God's given us a choice to choose heaven or hell for eternity. And so, 1 John 1:9 says that if we confess our sins, that means to all of us that He's faithful and just to forgive us of our sins, and faithful to cleanse us and purify us from all unrighteousness. And that is a free gift from God to all of us. And 1 Peter, Chapter 4, verse 8, says this, "Above all, love each other deeply, because love covers a multitude of sins." And Romans, Chapter 1, verse 16, says this, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel, because it is the power of God that brings salvation to everyone who believes first of the Jew, then to the Gentile." And so, I said all this to say this, that the reason why I'm here today is because I want to ask you, Mayor Box, Nathan Box, Mayor Nathan Box, and the city council, to stand for our religious freedom as born-again Christians, because as George Washington said, "It's impossible to govern a nation without the Bible and without God." And so, wisdom, perfect wisdom comes from God and God alone, and we need that wisdom. And I just want to ask you to stand for our religious freedom and for our religious freedom to live the way that God commands us to live in His Word, the Bible, and to be able to speak and proclaim the Word of God faithfully, the way that God tells us to. And so, that's what I want to do. I want to ask you to stand with born-again Christians and stand for our freedom, to be able to speak what God's Word says. And that's our God-given freedom from God and our constitutional right. And I stand before the Lord today, and, you know, I proclaim this. And so, I want to ask each and every one of you to stand with us for our religious freedom. I have a pastor friend in Canada. His name is Pastor Arthur Palowski, and his rights have been stripped away as a born-again Christian, to be able to speak the Word, to be able to feed people, hold church services, everything. And as a pastor, I see that on the horizon here in America. It's not only, you know, it can happen in Holland, Michigan. It can happen all over America, in each state, each city, each, you know, area. And so, I want to ask each and every one of you to please stand with Christians for our freedom, because it's not only our God-given right to stand and speak God's Word and proclaim it and live it, but it's our constitutional right also. And so, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and God bless you. Jesus loves you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Michael Perry from Holland, Michigan. Religious freedom. I didn't think I was going to live to see the day where I can't speak about my belief I think of it as crazy, or, I don't know, I just think it crazy that no matter where I go, I can be told, "You can't say that." I mean, I'm somebody that, I come from a past, and I lived that sinful lifestyle myself as, I'm a juvenile lifer, and to this day, I thank God that I'm out today. I've been able to be blessed to work with programs like 70x7, Escape Ministries, to work with youth, to help give people a better opportunity in a second chance. And it's only by the grace of God that I'm here today. I had people tell me I was stupid because I believed what I believed. Okay, maybe so, but that's my right. It's my constitutional right. I remember heard it said one time that the Constitution was created and written for the law-abiding citizens, and that the laws were created to keep evil and sin at bay. But now it seems that if you honor your Constitution, I don't think anymore, anymore. Somebody can tell me about their lifestyles at work, the things that they're involved in, the sin that they're doing, but once I speak about, I don't think that's right. Oh, I'm going to have to go to HR about you. Because I spoke my religious freedom, I speak about what I believe. But because somebody feels that that makes them uncomfortable, what you talk about makes me uncomfortable. I deal with it. And we just ask that you guys help us to uphold our religious freedoms, not just for Christianity, for anybody to believe what they want to believe. If that's what they want to believe, fine, we're all going to be accountable at the judgment one day before God for our own lives. But please, let's stop the attitude of, "You can't talk about that, but I can talk about what I want to talk about." What you say makes me uncomfortable, but I'm going to make you all as uncomfortable as I want to make you. And when we tear down our Constitution, what do we have? We have nothing. Then we start to stand for nothing. Then we fall for anything. And it's very important that we keep this. It's very important. We see the United States right now, just, it seems like it's being torn apart. First, we take God out of the picture. Then we take people that have faith systems out of the picture, because it becomes that much easier to say that you are wrong and I am right. Because if the only mind that we have is a human mind, who dictates what is right and wrong? I don't. I'm not perfect. I opened up telling you I'm not perfect. I made mistakes that cost me 30 years of my life. And that don't only just pain me because I did what I did, but because I know the people it hurt and how it impacted them. I know the impact of what sin does to people, all the way around. And for me not to be able to speak on that and touch people with that, I feel my tongue's being taken out of my mouth, but I have to keep my ears and hear everything everybody else says.
My name is Polly Cohen, and we reside in the city of Holland. And since 1990, my husband and I have both served on the Board of Directors of an organization called Jubilee Campaign, which fights on behalf of people that are experiencing human rights and religious liberties around the world, violations around the world. And we have done some very successful campaigns. Our representatives have spoken frequently before the United Nations High Commission for Refugees and Other Groups and Organizations on behalf of those that are experiencing human rights and religious violations around the world. But I never believed for even one minute that after 30 years of my husband and I serving the federal government, my husband six years in the U.S. Navy and four years in the U.S. Coast Guard, and almost 19 years, or over 19 years with the U.S. State Department, that we would come back to the state of Michigan and be experiencing human rights and religious liberty violations right here, because of ordinances that are being put in place, because of our governor who chose to lock down our churches and our schools and other opportunities for people to gather. Our Constitution protects our rights, and people around the world look to the United States of America as a source, that when you have a democratic republic, that people can have the rights and freedoms, the very rights and freedoms that this ordinance is trying to protect. There are countries around the world where if you're an LGBTQIA person, you could get pushed off a roof, and it would be considered perfectly legal. People come to the United States of America because they're looking for freedom. They're looking for opportunity, and they want that freedom to be equally available for all people. They want a businessperson to be able to say, "I have convictions, I have beliefs, and I want to be able to operate my business according to those beliefs." And that's why they come. Right here in Holland, a lady from Poland came here for freedom and opportunity to be able to start a business and to be able to operate her business according to her conscience and belief, and those rights were taken from her. And I think that when we look at ordinances that we put in place, when we're desiring to protect the interests of one group of people, it cannot be at the expense of another group of people, unless we want to be no better than countries around the world that are not protecting the rights of all the individuals. As was stated here tonight already by others, it's with liberty and justice for all, not for some, but for all. So whether you're a person of faith or not, you should be able to operate your business according to your convictions. You ought to be able to say, "I choose to do XYZ or not." And yes, we have protections. We already have protections that you can't discriminate based on sex or gender or on other things. But we need an exemption so that churches, so that nonprofit groups and organizations, such as our homeless shelter, can know that they are safe to be able to provide to this community the services that they have provided for so long. I ask that we not become a third-world nation here in the United States of America, but that we protect the human rights and religious liberties of all individuals. And I guarantee you, if things don't change, these international groups and organizations are going to start looking at our nation, no longer as the bright shining light, but as one where they have to come in to protect our rights and freedoms. Thank you for your attention. Have a wonderful remainder of your meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Hi, I'm Brian Cohen. I'm Polly's husband. My resume has already been stated for the record. Righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Today, we are looking at our society trying to provide the DIE philosophy to encourage people to accept one another as individuals. The DIE philosophy segregates individuals into specific groups so that we, as a society... so that we, as a society, can segregate and divide. It does not allow for each and every one of us to have our own opinion because it sets them aside, those that choose to do things which are not, how would I say? Not ethical, not moral. And those things that this society change is trying to accomplish is one of leading our nation, our society, to the brink of anarchy. This anarchy is trying to be forced upon a freedom-loving society, a society that treats people with respect. There are forces that are involved that are trying to move our society into civil disorder. The reason why is various. If you take a look at our history, our history has been one of a nation of laws. It's been imperfect. Our laws have evolved over time. And you can see from the beginning of our society, we had a foundation of Christianity. But in our society today, Christianity is being forced away to the closet, if you will. Our society is trying to force evil as good and make righteousness, holiness, and civil discourse an evil. And so, as a city council, the responsibility of the city council is to do justly, to love mercy and to walk humbly. And our society today is, you can see the influences of various groups that wish to create anarchy. And we can't have that in Holland. We need to be united as a people. And the definition of love has been transferred to a ideology that people use to beat others up with. And that's not what we should be doing as a society or as a community. Our community needs to hold to laws, our laws should also laws should also should also reflect should also reflect should also reflect that also reflect that reflect that. It's like that. It's vital. It's vitally, it's vitally important, it's vitally important that we do justly. And if we are striving to do justly, then we need to focus in on what it is that those from the outside are trying to influence in our politics and in our lives and in those that are around us. Why are we being influenced? There are a lot of questions that we have to ask. Who are we as a community? What is it that we strive for? When we can call good evil and evil good.
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes. I'm sorry, sir, your time has expired. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Would you, would you please, would you please state your, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Judy Chapel.
I'm sorry, municipality for the record?
Judy Chapel.
And what's your municipality? What city do you live in?
I live in Green Rockford.
Rockford, thank you.
Rockford. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking, but sometimes you have to speak. Things right now in this world are really crazy. And we are being divided. All of us are being divided. And I'm just here to tell you that God loves all of us. He, it doesn't matter what you are, if, if you're man, woman, gay, whatever, God loves us. And the only reason I'm speaking is because I feel that the time is so near. I know some of you may know what I'm talking about. But all of this is not surprising because it's in the Bible. It's in the Bible that this day would come. It's in the Bible that we would be against one another. It's in the Bible that there's gonna be disasters, as everything we've been finding out. So the reason I'm speaking is I seen a video one time, not that long ago. And I'm not, I don't want to say I'm a Christian, because to me, a Christian is someone that goes to church and, and they just go on and they, you know, bad mouth people and kind of stuff. I'm a Christ follower. I follow Christ. And my faith has become so strong over these last few years. That's one thing I can thank the government for. Um, the thing is hell, hell. Hell, it was a, a man who went to hell and he was in prison and he was beaten and he was just constantly, constantly over and over again, is like what God says will happen to people that go to hell. And then he would wake up, or he thought he'd wake up, and then he'd be sitting in his living room with his wife. And he'd tell his wife about what was going on, and he was thinking it was over, it was just a dream. And it went over and over again, and he burned in hell, and it just went over and over. So the reason I'm telling you this is because with God, with Jesus, you're saved. He died for you so you wouldn't have to go to hell. And the reason, as a Christ follower, we're not here to be judgmental. I know a lot of people think that as a Christian and a Christ follower, we're just judgmental. The only reason we want you, we talk to you and we want, I, I wish I could have more of my faith be out there to witness, and that is starting to come out of me. But the reason we talk about it is because God loves you so much, he doesn't want you to go to hell. So as a Christian, as a Christ follower, we want to tell you about Christ. It's like if we had a cure for cancer. If we had a cure for cancer and I could say, I have the cure for cancer, but I can't tell you about it. I have the perfect cure for cancer, but I can't tell you about it. I'm holding that from you. So as Christ followers, we need to let people know about Jesus. And so everybody thinks that this is all about, you know, bashing one another, but it's not. It's just that God has such a love for you and he wants us as Christians, as Christ followers, to follow him. To, he wants us to spread his love. He wants us to tell you the people that don't know about him, the good news. That if you're an adulteress, you can confess your sin and you can go to him and he'll forgive you. If, if you're in a sexual or if you're in a moral, sexual, he will forgive you and you can have eternity with him. Because, and you may think, what if I'm wrong? Well, what if I'm right? What if our time is right now? I have such an urgency in me right now to tell people. And I'm still kind of bashful, and this is not me up here speaking, trust me. And I'll tell you right now that things are so bad and I do not understand why the churches aren't standing up. And so I can see where you, you're thinking, why aren't the churches standing up? Why isn't there more people in here? Why isn't this place just screaming, but no one? You see how many people there are? That's the way it is at all meetings. So I'm telling you, if you do anything, just confess your sin and ask God to forgive you and ask for repentance so you can be saved because he loves you.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Last chance, anyone who would like to address counsel at this time? I'm closing the public comment period. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, special presentations and recognitions from the mayor or council or city manager. Special night tonight, even better than what is in the agenda. For the thirtieth year in a row, the city of Holland has been awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Twenty twenty-one, this is thirty years. Lynn, I want, Lynn, why don't you come up? Michelle, do you want to come up too? It's, I was told it was thirty years. Am I right on that? That this is thirtieth year in a row that we've received this award in of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And Lynn, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to be able to explain this better than I can, certainly. And then just today, we found out that the city has also received a second award from the Government Finance Officers Association. The, the governor's finance, or excuse me, the Government Finance Officers Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting, the PAFR Award. PAFR Award, the PAFR Award for its Popular Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And I think that that's an award that was designed specifically for people like me who are not that excited about reading four hundred pages of city budgets, although I go through it every single year. But you, your department has worked diligently to make this information accessible for the people of the city of Holland so that it's understandable, so that they can not only look at that four hundred page budget, but we also have a budget in brief, and as we talked about earlier, we've even got a little card that's a credit card sized. Where does your money go? Where does your money come from? Which I think is an absolutely wonderful tool to be able to pull out and go, this is, these are the important statistics. So I want you to be able to speak on it a little more, but I also wanted to say congratulations on both of these incredible awards.
Thank you very much for that. So yes, so every year we have to do an audit, so this one is the audit, and this is the big report that we're talking about. And Michelle spearheads the preparation of that in the department. I can assure you, it takes many hours getting all the information ready for the auditors to come in. And we're lucky to have a great staff and Michelle takes care of that process, so we're very thankful. And it ends up, we submit it to the GFOA, it's Government Finance Officers Association. And they have a program and what they're really, the goal of it is to make sure that we produce a document that has all the information for any stakeholder so they can get an adequate picture about how our financial health is, right? So it is pretty lengthy, but it does have lots of great information. And so for that, we're very fortunate to have received this award. And just to give you an idea, I looked it up today just to see where we're at, and only about forty-three hundred government bodies achieve this award in a given year, and that's not only the United States municipalities, but also some of the Canadian, Canadian ones can apply. So just so you know, that's less than five percent of, of organizations. So it is quite an honor and, and the other honor is the thirty years, right? So Michelle's been here a lot longer than I am, so it's, it's a great, great honor for the city. And so we're very proud of that achievement. But like, you know, we do realize, not everybody likes to read this whole thing. I actually do. But, um, so we had done this for the budget, so we wanted to do it for the audit too, because we think it's important that everybody does get a good info, good idea of how we're doing at the city, right? And so that's where last year, you might recall, we had implemented the first one of these that basically is kind of like the budget in brief, only from the audit. And it takes all this information and puts it in twelve pages, easy to read, available online. And so we also had, right, exactly. Just a little plug there. But, so we were very proud of it, and not only the work we did to put this together, but as you know, we've got a great media team here, they assisted with us. And then we have, we really use our resources. We get it out on Nextdoor, we get it out on Facebook, we get it out on lots of different areas. And that's important because we have nothing to hide. So we have all that information available and Michelle and the rest of our team too, we all work together in that. So I'm very thankful for the great department I have. And more importantly, yes, we received awards. So what's interesting, we just got it today because I just sent Michelle a note this morning. I'm like, have you seen anything else? We got that award yet? Because I was hoping to show, talk about this. And it came through this afternoon ironically. And that now makes the city of Holland in the GFOA standard a triple crown winner because we get the budget reward, the audit award, and now an award for the small versions. So we're very happy to be able to provide information for, for you and our citizens. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Great. Thank you. And, and congratulations. And Lynn, as you were saying earlier, it's not just about the awards, it's about providing the service to the people of Holland and making sure that the people of Holland have faith and confidence in how their, their money is spent and that we're doing good services for them. And so congratulations for that as well. And everybody in your department for doing an absolutely fantastic job for the people of the city of Holland. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, special order of the day, public hearings. Review and approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two CDBG program year. Mr. Van Deiken.
So I'm gonna punt really quickly on this one to Mark Cornelius. He's gonna come up and Mark, I've got the clicker for you. You've got a few slides in your presentation. But yes, I think all of you that have been on council for a little while probably recall this, as it's an annual thing that comes back. Mark will explain, you know, what this covers and kind of what some of the different pieces and parts that have gone into this are. You may have to turn it on.
Okay. So yeah, it sounds like we're transitioning from the PAFR to the CAPER. All right. So yes, as Matt just said, this is an annual occurrence, tends to coincide with the equinox, I guess, that we need to approve, that the city needs to approve, that you folks need to approve a report to the Department of Housing and Urban Development as to how we operated the Community Development Block Grant Year for the prior fiscal year. So that's why I'm here tonight. That's a requirement of HUD that it's, that's, that you folks pass it on to them. The CAPER, known as, what's known as the CAPER, the acronym spelled out as the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, covers the, the way we spent the funds and the accomplishments from the prior year. And it also addresses how, where we're doing in, in our five-year plan. Each year is embedded within, we're in the second year of our five-year plan, so the CAPER covers both of those subjects. So just a couple of slides that will summarize the, the CAPER itself, which is not a lengthy document. It's just fifteen, twenty pages with a couple of tables and then a couple of lengthy reports that, that, that feed all the data into the report. So I tried to present in a summary fashion what I think is the most relevant or the important data understand. So last year, we spent two hundred and seven thousand dollars in general CDBG funds. That's about two-thirds of what we'd hoped to spend for reasons that I think I may have mentioned in previous meetings. Our, our home repair program was running slow for the last year for reasons that I think were a lot tied to COVID and construction costs and supply chain issues. And it's, it's fairly typical that we do some sort of an infrastructure project in a typical year, and we did not accomplish that in the year prior. Then we, but we have one working at the moment. So that number, the, the entire number was a little bit low for the last year, and then you'll see how, how that spending broke down by the various programs. The homeowner assistance program is a new program. Well, new, new again, we did, we had a partnership with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity maybe six, seven, eight years ago that I'm not sure the reasons why that ended, and now we resumed that partnership with this year and continuing on to the current year. The public services portion are the, the amount of funds that were allowed to funnel out to nonprofit community. And we've chosen in the last year to focus on the issue of homelessness. And we have partnered with Community Action House and Good Samaritan Ministries in that regard. We routinely subcontract to the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan for what we consider to be essential services and, and essential for a number of reasons, but HUD expects us to show that we're doing a, a good amount of fair housing related work with, with these funds. And then the remainder goes to program administration. This slide is just a highlight of some of the outcomes. Well, actually, the next two slides cover key accomplishments. At the top there, I'm addressing just our own internal home repair program that we operate within the city. Again, just reflecting the lower numbers ordinarily, we would hope to serve. Again, just reflecting the lower numbers ordinarily, we would hope to serve 35 to 40 households last year, because numbers overall were low. We only served 18. The good news, I'll just quickly insert, is that so far this year since July 1, we're already working with, we've completed, I believe, 12, and we've got seven in, in process. So we're at 19 already for the current year. So something switched in the April, May, June time period, and, and things seem to be much more active, which is, which is great. And then you can see kind of a typical case, an average case, costing a total of $8,400 with the city's portion, the CDBG portion being $4,700, and the homeowners' portion being $3,700. And again, just parenthetically, this last effect of July 1, we bumped our cap up from $8,000 per project to $10,000 per project, just trying to reflect on some of those increased costs that homeowners are experiencing. The numbers in the green box are, it's just a reflection of the families that we're working with, based on income type and other characteristics, that extremely, and this is HUD language, I realize it's a little bit awkward, but extremely low-income households are those earning between 0 to 30% of the area median. And I've got those numbers if you'd like to hear more precisely what those equate to in terms of dollars. The very low-income households are those earning between 30 and 50% of area median, and then that low income, sometimes called median income, or, or low, low mod income is the 51 to 80% of AMI. So you can see we're kind of spread more or less evenly amongst those three groups, which I think is a good thing. We certainly want to be serving those lowest-income households as, as best as we can. And then five of those households were, were female-headed households, and eight of those were elderly-headed households. There again, we like to see those groups represented in the, in the folks that we're serving. The table to the right just gives you an indication of the types of projects that we're working on. It's a little bit of a, of an anomaly this year. Usually it's roofs, sewers, and furnaces out of the top three. For some reason, did a few more window and door projects last year, but ordinarily, sewers and furnaces would be near the top. Just briefly, before I move on, I'm, I'm going to go off the slides here a minute, and just mention a little bit of, of, of the racial breakdown of who we served, and not just in the home repair program, but with all of the funds that were, all of the programs that were funded with CDBG funds, so including the folks served by Community Action House and Good Samaritan Ministries totaling 644 persons. So I don't have a slide on this, but it is on page four of the CAPR, if you, if you need to refer to that. So I'm just going to compare the racial breakdown of who was served by CDBG funds versus kind of what the representation is within the city population. So we served 50%, 50, we served 57% of the individuals we served were represented by the white population, and in the, in the overall city population, that makeup is 71%. The black African-American population, we served 18%, whereas the representation within the city is closer to 4%. The Asian population was pretty representative, 2% served, 2.8% in the general population. And then folks that either identified as some other race or multirace, that represented 22% of who we served, and that's 20% of the, the general city population. In terms of ethnicity, 18% of those we served were self-identified as Hispanic ethnicity, and in the general population, that's 23%. And then that last bullet there on the slide that's still showing is just the one household that we assisted in partnership with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity. We were hoping to serve three in the last fiscal year. We've served three now, because we're, we caught up in the last couple of months, and then we're hoping to serve six families in the year ahead. And then, next slide, just a summary of the number of persons that were served with our sub-agreements with Community Action House and Good Samaritan Ministries totaling 643 persons. And then that bottom bullet just gives you an idea of the type of work being done by the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan, the number of hours of instruction or, or education they're providing to persons representing a protected class, and the number of hours of education provided to persons representing the housing industry, and the number of active investigations and closures from the past year. And this table is not a part of the CAPR, but I just thought you'd like to know, if you recall, in addition to our general CDBG funds, we received a fair amount, $390,000 in COVID supplemental funding. Just a quick update on that, that, that between the city and its three partners, 96.5% of those dollars have been spent out. And you can kind of see how that spreads out in the bottom. So public engagement, public comment is an important ingredient in, in, in HUD's work and the work we do on behalf of HUD. So we do put this report out to the public for comment. We did not receive any comment up until tonight, but we are holding a public hearing as a part of this, as a part of this agenda item. So that's what I prepared for a summary. I'm open to any, any questions you might have about this content or anything else in the CAPR.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Questions from, yes, Lynn.
So on page six, you talked, you talk a bit about leveraging, and there's a contribution that each household makes based on their income level. And I was wondering if you see any, if that's a limitation, like if people decide not to participate because they can't pay their 10 or 25 or 50%?
What I know is that it's very rare that that's a substantial barrier. It presents itself as a barrier, and then Michelle, who operates this program, Danielle, rather, who operates this program day-to-day, has connections with HomeCor and perhaps, perhaps the county. There may be some other funds that we can assist certain, certain individuals with, depending on where they live in the city and, and other characteristics. So, yeah, I think fortunately, that's rare, that especially for those lower-income households, if, if that 10% contribution or 25% contribution is a barrier to them completing the project, we, we seek out other, other funding to help them do that. So, and the other thing I'll add is, in, on July 1, I noted earlier that we raised our cap to $10,000 from 8 to 10. We also kind of bumped up the, the split, the city split versus the homeowner split by a little bit. So we're just a little bit more generous. We still cap out at, at 90% of our funds versus 10% of the homeowner, but everywhere in between a 50% contribution and a 90% contribution, the line is just a little bit more generous towards the homeowner. So we're, we're aware of, of the issue, and we try to make it as little of a barrier as possible. And we're very grateful to HomeCor for their, for their contributions.
Nikki.
Yes, and are people referred to you primarily, or do they come to you of their own because they've heard?
So Danielle runs the program day-to-day, so I don't know where, where the majority of the calls originate from. My hunch is they, they're hearing about the program from a friend or a relative, or a neighborhood connector organization, or from city staff that maybe have cited them for a potential violation. And then we're always, you know, hopefully in those instances, trying to give them resources to, to correct for that. So probably across the board, but they're, it, the calls always originate from the homeowner, but more than likely, they're being connected with somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the previous slide, if you could switch back to that, you mentioned contributions made under COVID funding?
Yes.
Can you give us an idea, especially for the public listening, what, what, what might have been applied to that? What, how was that applied, and how was it used?
Yep. So we, very early on in the process, we identified three partners. We had, well, we identified issues that we wanted to work, that we wanted to, to support, food access, because the numbers at, for example, Community Action House were skyrocketing very early in the pandemic, when a lot of businesses were shut down. So we, we identified them as a partner, Community Action House being the lead provider of food assistance in the community. And then homelessness prevention, certainly. A lot of households were at risk of, with their loss of income, or the instability of their income with, with their housing status. So we partnered with Good Samaritan Ministries. And there was also a pretty clear sense that, for similar reasons and, and other just kind of general stressors in society, that domestic violence rates were going to be kind of increasing. So, and that just wasn't our gut, that was, you know, experience happening, you know, throughout the country or regionally. So we identified Resilience, formerly Center for Women in Transition, as a partner. So we established agreements with those three entities for specific services. HUD required that we be able to connect the dots with COVID and the programs and the spending, but we, we were able to do that kind of as a summary for how I just described those three services and why we selected those three providers, those three partners. So I don't know if that answers your question fully, but that's, that's, that's the direction we went. Other communities went very different directions, but I think it, it worked out well for us in the.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Coronado.
I just had a question about the statistics. I know you covered the white, African-American, Asian, and Hispanic. Just wondering if you had any database or data regarding veterans, or LGBTQ, or any disabled people? So I just wondered how specific or how narrow, and, I mean, because of homelessness, we know it's a problem, we know it's an issue, and, you know, partnering with some of the agencies, I just wonder if some of those statistics are available?
Yep. They for sure are from, from Community Action House and from Good Samaritan Ministries. I'm confident that their data collection system includes the, the veteran question, certainly, and the disability question. Was there a third category that you mentioned?
Disabled.
Disabled, yeah.
People like, that are taking care of maybe someone disabled in a family, a provider or whatnot. So I just wondered if any of those statistics are available. I know Habitat for Humanity has a program that helps veterans and, and, you know, single household families, but I just wonder, and, and, and Community Action House also, they help everyone in the community, but, but I'm just wondering about that, particularly because I, I, you know, the very, the, the population we serve in homelessness, you know, what is the demographics, you know, situation, some of the barriers and whatnot that keep them in there? Maybe that's another whole conversation, but I just was curious about those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know those numbers, they're not at my fingertips tonight, but I'm, as I said, they're, I'm highly confident that those two entities gather that information, so could report that information. And I could collect that from them if, if you would like to have me share that with you.
I was just curious about that, because we do serve many veterans, and, and, you know, we know that our, our elderly, you know, you covered that, but just didn't see anything about the veterans. And I read recently that the veteran suicide here in Ottawa County was, you know, high, significant, and being a veteran, I just wondered if that's something that we can start keeping track of?
Sure.
So, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for staff? Great. Thank you, Mark. And as you alluded to, we do need to do a public hearing on this, so we're going to open a public hearing on this particular item, same five-minute limit that we have in the public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in regard to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, or the public hearing, excuse me, close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPR, for the 2021-2022 CDBG program year? Moved by Peters, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado? Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnspores?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 6B, PA 198 Tax Abatement Request for Hyperion Automation, 72 West 64th Street, Suite 140. Mr. Van Dyken.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This evening, Greg King from Lake Shore Advantage is here. Greg is going to be helping out, actually with the next two items on your council agenda. He's got, he'll be able to handle the detail, and then we also have representatives of both companies for those next two items. But before that, I feel obligated to, in my best Keith Van Beek, you know, imitation, which I'm not very good at, he would say that 50% of something is better than 100% of nothing. And really, that's what these kind of represent to the city, but it also allows these companies some flexibility to invest in their own companies and then hire people. So again, I'm sure I'm going to get a text quickly from Keith about my impression of him, but with that, I will turn it over to Greg, and then Greg has Kelsey Shirley and Troy Moreland, is that correct, from Hyperion Automation here that can answer any questions you may have as well.
Welcome, Greg. And please, would you let people know your name and who you work for?
So I'm Greg King, Senior Business Solutions Manager with Lake Shore Advantage, the economic development agency for Ottawa and Alleghen Counties. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And Matt, I had that quote all ready to go, so I'm glad that you got to before I did. So, so this first one in front of you, I guess maybe you should go through what a tax abatement is really quick. So our property tax statement is a 50% reduction in real property taxes associated with the project for a period of up to 12 years. It's a tool that is specific to the state of Michigan and is available through local municipalities such as the City of Holland. Lake Shore Advantage is the economic development agency, works with companies to get these tools, to work on these programs, to incentivize businesses to come to Michigan, and for companies to stay in Michigan as well. So that's the first one that you're going to say here tonight. So Hyperion Automation, automation provider. I'm going to have the representatives here speak momentarily, but I also want to make sure I talk about the two types of tax abatements that are here. So the first one for Hyperion is a, what we would say, normal tax abatement. So it's the real property that Hyperion Automation put into the facility at 72 West 64th Street. So that's one application. And there's a second one, the speculative one, that we've come with you before. And so that is a tool that a developer, in this case, Paul Hoekstra with Electric Steel, applied for with you guys back in November of 2021. Essentially is a holding place for a company to then come in and apply for the original build-outs of that unit. So a developer can use that tool and advertise to companies that, hey, if they come in and they work with Lake Shore Advantage and other folks, that they can apply for not only the original build-outs of the facility they're going into, but a reduction for any real property improvements that they're putting in as well. So this is very similar to two projects you already approved this year in the very same developments with Strategic Label and Bypass International Corporation, also doing business as Quest Car Care Products. So quick, that was a quick reminder on that. I'll answer the questions about those if you have them, but I want to make sure that's our company representatives have a chance to speak as well. So I'll turn it over to Hyperion Automation.
Good evening. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Kelsey Shirey. I work for Hyperion Automation in the City of Holland.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So, Kelsey Shirey, nice to meet you all. Happy to be here. I'm the Office Manager at Hyperion Automation. Hyperion Automation is a growing automation company. We engineer custom electrical and automation solutions, from standalone machines to system integration. To give you a brief history, in 1996, we were founded as INTECH. In 2012, INTECH merged with Inline Electric and Controls. And in 2019, the Controls and Automation divisions split off to form Hyperion Automation. Earlier this year, we expanded, more than doubling our footprint. Our newly constructed facility has over 15,000 square feet, a flexible floor space, which allows us to take on larger, more complex manufacturing cells, or even multiple cells at a time. We continue to grow and expect to create 12 new jobs by 2026. This will include a project manager, buyer, four automation engineers, and six machine builders. Hyperion Automation works hard to be involved in our community. We partner with Careerline Tech Center here in Holland to support students interested in automation careers. Our President Jeremy Wright and Vice President Troy Moreland sit on the Advisory Board for the Mechatronics and Robotics Division, who meet regularly to, to discuss how instructors can best prepare the students for what the industry needs. In addition, we source materials and services locally as much as possible. We donate to local organizations and have sponsored multiple local schools for sports and extracurriculars. For example, earlier this year, we sponsored Genesee Robotics Team and Riptide Fast Pitch Youth Self-Body. It has been a pleasure speaking with you today about a company that I feel so fortunate to be a part of. I appreciate your time and welcome any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from council members?
No, but I think Councilman Hoekstra, who is not here tonight, would ask, or congratulate you and comment on your community involvement, and then the number of positions involved that will be created. that will be created. And he would ask about salaries, but I won't ask about that. I'm assuming that they're competitive.
Yes, and I do have it prepared if you'd like to hear it as well.
Sure, why not?
Sounds like an offer. I can't refuse.
So for the automation engineers, we pay $30 to $45 per hour with opportunity for a lot of overtime and travel. Project managers, salary of $60,000 to $80,000 per year. Buyer, $50,000 to $60,000 per year. And the machine builders, $20,000 to $34,000 per hour with, again, a lot of opportunity for overtime and travel.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We need to do a public hearing on this as well. So I would open a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the PA 198 tax abatement request for Hyperion Automation, 72 West 64th Street, Suite 140?
Motion to approve, item 7B on the agenda.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 6C, speculative PA 198 tax abatement for Electric Steel LLC, 72 West 64th Street. Mr. Van Dyken?
So I think we had some really good background from Greg at the beginning, and I believe we have Paul Hookstra representing the company. That, please come forward if you would and can explain this and their impact on their company.
Yeah, you, thank you for having me. Paul Hookstra, operate Hookstra Electrical Services in Holland. And then my side gig here the last couple of years has been a partner in Electric Steel. And like Greg said, I was here about 10 months ago getting, asking for the speculative tax credit for the first building that you guys gave us. And then, yeah, which gave the opportunity for Hyperion and Quest and Strategic Label to move their businesses to Holland and, yeah, establish their roots here. So I'm here requesting that same speculative tax credit for a second building. It's identical to the first one that we did. It's a 39,000 square foot industrial space. Yeah, a little bit, right there is, yeah, the actual land. And then, yeah, the building, like I said, is 39,000 square feet. It's master deeded for seven smaller units within that, but the way we've designed it is just completely flexed space to accommodate whatever a tenant or an owner might need. So Quest took, like in the first building, Quest took 14,000 square feet. Hyperion took 14, and then we sold about 8,000 square feet to Strategic Label. So it's a really nice, yeah, it's a nice way to present that perspective to tenants. So, yeah, I'm open to questions and yeah, just glad to be here.
Great. Any questions from council members?
Sounds like a success story.
Yeah, the first one was success, and we've had quite a bit of interest on the second building. Nobody has signed lease or signed a purchase agreement yet, but the, the activity and the questions that we've been getting, Steel started going up yesterday. So I think once people start seeing it and can kind of get a visual, that will help too. So, yeah.
Any other questions from council? Yes, Mr. Vreeman?
Just a comment. Paul, I've known you for many, many years, and I just so appreciate your growing business, that you're invested in the community, and that you give back through giving and tithing and all sorts of ways and ways to do that. So thank you for investing in our community in such a great way.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? That's right, because that's allowed as well. All right. Seeing none, what is the, oh, I don't need to do pleasure to counsel on this one yet. We need to do a public hearing on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, we need to do a public hearing on this one as well. So open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Motion to approve, go ahead.
Item 7D is presented.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion from council? I just wanted to, one, one comment to kind of bounce off of what Mr. Vreeman said. Thank you for this and also for the, members of the public, we all kind of chuckle about the Mr. Van Beek quote of half of something is better than all of nothing. And for those people who don't understand that is, if council were not to approve some of these tax abatements, to reduce these taxes on these folks by 50%, these projects might not happen at all. And so what that half of something versus all of nothing means is, because this project is going ahead, we're going to be able to get for a period of time, half of the taxes on this project versus no increase in taxes at all. And as we've seen tonight, both with the speculative tax abatement and the prior one with Hyperion Automation, and please pass this along to Hyperion Automation as well, that what this is doing is allowing for a lot of growth for small business in the, in the community. And I heard a rumor prior to the meeting that there may be more tax abatements requests coming before us, which means that this is a community that is growing lots of jobs, lots of activity in the support of council and the community and making that happen. So we really appreciate that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 6D, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on the final assessment for October 5, 2022. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yes, so just like the last two, the next three are very similar to each other in nature. And then, as a matter of fact, adopt similar or identical resolutions of necessity for the downtown parking, PSD, and snowmelt assessments. So this is something that comes to you each and every year. It is a three-step process. This is step two of the process. So essentially what you're doing in this, and Vince can tell me if I'm wrong, but is you're saying, yes, we need to have a special assessment to pay for those services downtown. Free parking is not free. Snowmelt is not free. And all those wonderful events that go on all year downtown on the farmer's market, those are not free either. So the action before you tonight is to adopt a resolution of necessity and to schedule that final step on October 5.
And so what I, I think I just heard you say is that you just explained the next three items all at once, but we are going to do three separate public hearings on these, three separate motions, three separate votes.
I figured you probably didn't want to hear me talk three separate times and say the same separate thing, but you do have to take three separate actions.
I, I very much please, I'm very pleased by the fact that you combined that all into one. So, any questions for staff in regard to the downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment, the downtown principal shopping district assessment, and/or the downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment? We'll combine all three, all three items into the question period.
I have a small question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Arnsors.
So as part of the process of this, all the store owners, the shop owners, the vendors are all in agreement with this?
Yes. So you're saying all of, everyone is, so the groups that represent all of the folks that have businesses downtown, the DDA and the PSD, those bodies voted unanimously to bring this to you at the rates outlined in the report. Can I say that each and every person that gets that assessment is excited about it? I can't say that. I guess I can't say that they aren't. But we've not received any negative comments at this point, and I'm not sure if we have anyone here for, to comment at this point in the process either.
Yeah. And we can provide a public hearing for them to make those comments now.
We can.
We can. All right. Any, any other questions for staff before we open a public hearing? Seeing none. All right, I will open a public hearing in regard to the downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Anyone who would like to address counsel in regard to that particular assessment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item 6D?
Move to adopt a resolution of necessity for annual downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment.
We have moved by Coronado, and that's, and I apologize, my mistake, that's item 7D. I had crossed through item seven on the, on the other page. So that is item 7D, but you, you gave the motion perfectly, so it didn't need the numbers. So I appreciate that. Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. And now I will open a public hearing in regard to item 7E, the downtown principal shopping district assessment, adopting a resolution of necessity for the annual principal shopping district assessment, and adopting a resolution scheduling a hearing for the final assessment for October 5, 2022. Is there anyone here who would like to address counsel in regard to that particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item 7E?
Move to adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual principal shopping district assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on October 5.
And a resolution of necessity for the shopping district assessment. Oh, you got that already too, didn't you?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. The, moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. And I will now open a public hearing in regard to the downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment to adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment, and to adopt a resolution regarding scheduling a hearing on the final assessment for October 5, 2022. Is there anyone here who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Move to approve downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment, adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment, and adopt a resolution scheduling for the final assessment on October 5, 2022.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing an opportunity for the public to speak to us in person at our council meetings during the public comment period, we do also have the opportunity for them to write to us if they would like to. And we, we have even put together a special email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We collect those in the interim between our regular meetings and then include them as part of the record here, although we do not read them aloud. We do not have any this week, but I just wanted to make that point so that people were aware that that was, there was that opportunity. Next item on the agenda, item 12E 4.1, the BSNA system upgrade. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yeah, so Lynn is here as well, and I don't know if she wants to make a few comments at the mic, but this, what this does is this replaces the New World slash Tyler financial system that we use and goes to a different vendor, BSNA. BSNA is not new to us. We are, we have been with them for as long as I've been with the city that I can remember, and that's a pretty long time. This does two things. It shifts us to their ERP system or their finance system, the BSNA system. But what you may not know is that our building department system, many, many, many of our, our assessing system are also in BSNA. It takes those applications that are now on-prem, so they're in a server room right up there, and moves them into the cloud. So the systems become better integrated. The finance system was a completely separate entity from the other systems that we use, and this creates the connections to them, has them all now in the cloud. And that really does a couple of things for us. The first thing it does is it takes the security and moves it to the cloud. So we don't have to worry about having our small IT staff worry about the security of our finance system. And then it also makes those better connections between all of those integrated systems. The other thing it does is it takes our IT budget and keeps it from doing this. And what I mean by that is we pay an annual fee every year, just like we have to Tyler and New World in the past. And now all those applications are in the cloud, so we never have to make a large investment in hardware that sits here and lives here. Or if that investment in hardware that sits here and lives here has a failure, then we need to replace it immediately in order for those services to stand up. Those are now on the cloud. They have redundancy. For all we know, they could have an entire server farm fall out, and we wouldn't even know it. It'd be a blip, and our services would stay up. So that's the IT nerd stuff. So I reverted there a little bit to my former, my former position, but Lynn, I think you've got some other stuff that you would like to add.
Thank you. Yes, Matt, Matt did a great job of explaining the need at the city. I just wanted to kind of reiterate why, sometimes we would have expected to see this as more of an RFP process when we're going through like a major system change. But really, what, what Matt alluded to is our BSNA system functionality is working just fine. We just want to make it an even better tool by getting it into the cloud, because we saw during COVID, you know, there is a benefit to having it not on-premise. So the real situation, the real need came in our finance modules. And so we kind of had a unique situation here because we have actually two, already we have two environment, two of the major players in the market. So if we went out to an RFP process, we really would have just got quotes from Tyler. They just wanted to sell us their new project, product, and then mute BSNA and probably one more. So it's actually, that's why we are recommending, since we have that desire to stay with BSNA, because we don't want to go through a process of changing what we're really happy with. And they're really service most municipalities in the state of Michigan. So that's why we came up with these two options and are asking you to waive a formal RFP process, because we went through and got quotes from each one. And while we desire to stay on BSNA from a functionality point of view, because right now we actually receive payments in, for example, tax payments. We put them in one system, then at the end of the day, we take them out of that system, and then we manually put them in the other system. So it's 2022. We probably don't need to do that. So, so this is going to really create a lot, a more efficient process, and BSNA is less expensive than converting to munis. So save a few dollars too. So with that, I'm sure Matt or I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on this topic.
Great. Any questions for staff?
This will help with your creating that, the book at the end of the year too, the financial.
Right, because the BSNA system, I've actually had the unique opportunity to work in both of those environments. I've implemented both of those softwares. And BSNA, BSNA is, just has a lot more capability of drilling down and get a lot more information. So even when we're preparing for the audit, all the information's readily available. And so we have great, it's not, we have great, it's not, we have great controls, we have great controls, great controls, but controls, but it's, but it's just, but it's just one less thing we have to worry about, because if you're taking something out of a system, putting it in another system, you always have that opportunity to make an error, quite frankly. So I think it's just going to make it much more, a much better process.
Ms. Raymond and then Mr. Corbin.
Is there a particular criteria that we should be taking into consideration when we waive an RFP process?
So we don't really ask that, that a lot. So the criteria you should ask yourself in this case, just in my opinion, would be, are we missing, like, are we getting ourselves into, are we missing an opportunity to have an even better product? Or are we paying more because we're not going through an RFP process, right? So in this one, the reason I feel comfortable asking for the waiver is because we know we've got two of the major providers of that type of software service. But the really big reason why I'm comfortable asking is that if we went through the whole RFP process, it would be probably to evaluate all of our systems, because you want, most of the systems now will be, they're called enterprise resource system or ERP systems. So we have the majority of our modules in BSNA and are completely happy. So for us to go through that process, because the RFP process for a system, I've been through a couple of them, it's quite extensive actually in this case. You usually have, because it's such a big investment, you'll have the RFPs come back, you'll have interviews with staff, you'll have demonstrations. So it's quite an extensive process. So, but I do, so those are the kinds of things I would ask.
Thank you.
Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm hearing is that it probably costs us much more, even if we transition to a different software application in this case.
Yes.
Okay. And then would then we consider this a sole source?
It, it's kind of almost like it is a sole source, because really what we're asking to do is BSNA, so is a BSNA, so we have BSNA, so we have BSNA, so we are BSNA. So we already vetted BSNA when we got the BSNA system. So we're kind of just asking, hey, could we just get a couple more modules, because it fits with the rest of our system? So it, you know, it's source, sole, you're right. It's kind of like a sole source.
Okay. And so what is, just, is it
So we're kind of just asking, hey, could we just get a couple more modules, because it fits with the rest of our system? So it, you know, it's source, sole, you're right, it's kind of like a sole source.
And so what is, just, does it have to be part of the, the motion need to include the formal process, formal process, formal process? Does that process, does that need to be a part of that?
I'm probably going to look to our city attorney on that one, who is probably looking up something in the charter. I will just say, we, we wouldn't want to go from BSNA. The cost for us to go from BSNA from a staff training perspective alone is pretty astronomical. We're happy with them, we've been with them for a very long time, and we, we know what it would cost to go with them versus to go with Munis, and we really don't want to go with Munis. Let's be honest with you.
I, I appreciate that, I just want to make sure we're being careful with our precedents and how we do this, and there's, there's an extenuating circumstance explained by staff, which we have.
Yep.
And I think that's appropriate then to waive, but I just want to make sure what the process is. I don't think it would hurt to include it in the motion.
Yeah, and the, the agenda says BSNA system upgrade, so it seems it was always intended to go with a BSNA.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it hurts, I think, to recognize that there's a waiver of a formal RFP as requested, and that you're actually approving a contract in connection with that, because of the uniqueness as described by staff. That would be an appropriate motion, that you're both waiving the RFP process because of the unique nature, and that you're approving a contract.
Okay. And that, and that language is included in the suggested motion in the staff report, so if we, if we follow that, we're going to be good shape.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion based on the recommendation, including in the staff report.
And, and you're doing that in the form of a motion right now?
Form of motion.
All right. Moved by Mr. Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lynn. Next item, item 12E 6.1, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation Sal Perez Scholarship Program, cash receipt reporting dates August 1 through September 11, 2022, $60. Parks and Recreation, new plantings on 8th Street, Zoe Fern Rice, $5. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 13, communications from the city manager, or assistant city manager, as there may be this evening.
I don't have anything additional at this time.
I'm not sure what to do with that. Move on. All right, we will, thank you. Next is appointments and communications from the mayor. I do have one appointment this evening. It is my recommendation that the city council approve the appointment of Terry DeYoung to the Human Relations Commission, the HRC, for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Moved by Peters, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. DeYoung. And I do also have a mayoral proclamation this evening in regard to Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Holland joins other communities across our nation in honoring the many ways the Hispanic community contributes to our common goals, in working together toward a stronger and more inclusive future, and a more prosperous America for all. And whereas we recognize the contributions of Hispanics, Latinos, and those Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America, have been recognized and celebrated nationally and here in Holland during National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 to October 15. And whereas we benefit from the many contributions of Hispanic healthcare professionals, educators, agricultural workers, community resilience, and resilience, and resilience, to resilience, to withstand, to withstand, to withstand, to withstand, to withstand, to withstand, to withstand hardship, to withstand hardship, to withstand hardship, withstand hardship, withstand hardship, stand hardship, stand hardship. In that same vein, we recognize the great strength of current and future Hispanic youth and the contributions that they'll make to our community and this great nation. And whereas Latin Americans United for Progress, LOOP, has been serving the Latin American community and is a driving force for change in the Holland community since 1964, an organization empowering Latinos to participate in creating a better community for all through advocacy, celebration, and education. And whereas we invite the community to support the LOOP Annual Gala on October 28, 2022, to celebrate the accomplishments of the LOOP organization through their Youth Leadership Conference, Fiesta celebrations, and services to the Latino community. Now therefore I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2022, Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Holland, and encourage residents to participate in Hispanic Heritage Month programming throughout our city. I encourage our residents to share in this annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Hispanic and Latin Americans who have influenced and enriched our community. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland, this 21st day of September 2022, Mayor Nathan Box. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Anything from council? Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I'm going to throw my turn. Yeah, I, so yesterday we had, Jay and I sit on the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, and we had a really interesting meeting, and one of the things that we're working on is identifying priorities for the planning thing, at the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission, and probably lots of committees are doing this as well. But one of the things that keeps bubbling up to the surface is the conversation around transportation and ensuring that we have a variety of transportation, and in particular that we have an effective and efficient MAX transit. And so I'm going to steal Jay's thunder here a little bit, but we were thinking that it might be a good idea to have a study session about, just to learn a little bit more about MAX transit. I sit on the board for MAX Transit, and I'm on the executive committee, so I spoke with the, with the executive director today, and she actually, actually it came up from another board member that they would like to see some presentations around the, it was somebody from the Holland Township and was hoping for a, that a presentation might be helpful. And she really welcomes the opportunity to be able to come and talk with us about the work they're doing, the challenges they have. And so I would love to see this on a study session, if we could add it to a study session in the next couple of months. I think it's a really, it would, you know, as we're moving towards January and our retreat and, and trying to make priorities, I think this would be, I think, an interesting topic for us to, to look at.
I think Mr. Van Dyken was taking notes in that regard.
I will pass that along to Keith. Obviously he sets, along with the mayor sets those study session agendas, I don't have the authority to do that, but I can strongly encourage that we get one of those.
Well, it's sort of my understanding that we actually have the authority.
Yeah, we do, yes, yeah.
I sent it to Keith already, so he's aware of it.
I will say that's a great idea.
Yep.
No, I, I would true.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I, I really support that a lot. We don't know enough, a lot of us don't know enough about each of these committees, because we don't get to sit on all of them, obviously, and we don't have a whole lot of time to discuss that. Here, at the end of a meeting, we give a brief summary of what some of us have done, but I would, I would welcome that, but I'd also welcome some of the other committees do likewise, and some of the other boards and commissions that we're on. So I would truly support that. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Especially since we're growing, and we are approving and building more and more residential and businesses.
Yep, I'm getting head nods from majority, if not all of us, on this thing, so, yeah. Any, any others? Ms. Coronado?
I have one thing. I just want to thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month. So that's why I'm dressed in my Hispanic heritage culture and customs, you know. So I had the pleasure of attending today the Michigan Latino Legislative at the Capitol Heritage Hill, and just some of the statistics were profound. We are the fastest growing, and we, you know, there, there are 600,000 in Michigan Hispanic, and we pay over, we have 25,000 small businesses, we have 400, we pay $450 million in taxes, we are teachers, activists, members of legislative, and this, the value of diversity. So I just was really proud to be there today on this day, and then you read the proclamation. So together, we are stronger, and I'm grateful for my heritage, but I'm grateful that I have the opportunity to represent our community as we are, are fast and rising in the statistics. But there are still some concerns that we need to do work on the census, you know, COVID, COVID, they talked about certain disparities, and COVID was one of them, that the, the statistics weren't very down to, but down to the exact science, however, black and brown fatalities more so than our counterparts, Caucasian. So anyways, I'm just very grateful to be a part of the council, and thank you for the proclamation, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Any other comments from council members? Seeing none, there is just one more motion I would entertain at this point. Moved by Vreeman, support by Peters, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.